Sorry about uh. Oh yeah, I'll try and do my best to pull up the John.
Eighty guys in. That's sixteen million. Okay, we've got some. Mr. Natalie.
Eric.
And Tommy.
Here.
Mr. Harding.
Here.
Mr. McGuire.
Eric.
Mr. Thorne.
Here.
Ms. Bow.
Here.
We've got six attendees in attendance that made it to four and we've got a meeting. There are no gubernatorial announcements or pledges or anything else to be done this evening. Uh, first thing on our agenda is the minutes of July seventeen, two thousand twenty-three. We have a motion to so approve.
So move the at with.
Second Thomas.
Moved by the at we signed by Thomas to approve the minutes of July seventeen, two thousand twenty-three. Any corrections to the minutes? There being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? There's no opposition to it, so the motion passes and yes, that is law. Okay, and the next item on our agenda is the President's report and the civility pledge. Ms. McGuire. During this evening to read the civility pledge.
Okay, in interest of civility, I'd like us to promote civility and listening, being respectful of others. Acknowledge that we are all striving to support and improve our community and understanding that we each have different ideas for achieving that objective.
Thank you. Uh, all right, uh, there's one housekeeping that needs to be done. We have received a resignation from the P and Z, the planning and zoning. Anyone interested can submit a letter of interest to me at any time. We will also post this on the website and on the next newsletter. Uh, and then there was an interesting note that I received and forwarded to the staff. And this came from a Mr. Vitons. With. I apologize, it's.
Attentive to the business.
There we go. There we go, somebody's talked to the gentleman.
Fellow attorney.
Okay. Now, he sent me an email and states, uh, Mr. Pickett, I recently represented the owner of one thousand and one West Main Street and the sale of the property. It was an extremely challenging transaction. The people at Village Hall, however, did not contribute to the difficulty. They were extremely friendly and efficient. It was a real pleasure dealing with them. Keep up the good work, sincerely, Vitons. So, that kind of comments do not come along often, and I shared that as soon as I got it with the staff. I appreciate it. Uh, while we're on the subject of employees, uh, at the last meeting, there were some comments made about villagers complaining about, uh, employees. And I want to tell everyone here that the process is not to criticize our people in public. If we've got an issue with our employees, let me know and let Mr. Mills know, and we will arrange to have it placed on an executive session for discussion in private, and we will take those issues individually with the employees that are involved. If there's any residents that have an issue with an employee, likewise, contact me, let me know. If you want to file a formal written complaint with that employee, about that employee, you may do so by filing it with the village park at any time. But those situations will be taken up in private, not in a public forum. Okay. Uh, next item I'm going to do is request an amendment to the agenda. I would like to amend the agenda to move item number thirteen, old business to the present.
So moved.
Second. I second.
Moved by Harding, yeah, moved by Harding, seconded by Thorne. Uh, any comments, questions, comments, and concerns about moving the agenda item? Being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. We are now bringing old business, item number I, to the forefront, the discussion of sixteen oh one West Main Street and the events on or around July twenty-fifth. Uh, okay, I was not personally in town at that point. There are other people who were here who have witnessed it. And I have asked whether it should be brought up now so that we can get to the bottom of this, the truth and the facts. Therefore, the public comments will not be based in any windows and opinions. Okay, uh, Ms. Bow.
Yes.
You asked.
I did ask this.
So I will let you start the conversation.
All right, um, I attended a meeting last week in, set up by the Safe Run Sleepy Hollow group. In full disclosure, once I arrived, I realized there are three trustees there. Since Kelly and Jenny had been there first, I asked that they go ahead and participate. I literally sat and did not speak to anybody and just listened because I knew one of the topics had to do with the sixteen oh one West Main Street, the lot across from Jewel that was proposed for the storage unit. Um, I, basically after the meeting, I, I understand. I understand the fear that struck a lot of the, the residents where you see fire. Um, I want you guys to know that I don't take this lightly. Currently, my mom is nine miles from a forest fire in Montana with my aunts. I've been through forest fires out there. It is, no matter what happens, it's a loss of control and it's your home, so it's not taken lightly. Um, but I think that there was some information that I heard that night in the meeting that was incorrect, and I wanted to clarify some of that. I understand that people were really upset, thinking that we had had this ordinance passed by the previous board back in April that stipulated setbacks, landscaping, et cetera, to that lot. That all is true. Unfortunately, on Wednesday, I came down and I went through the records. Uh, with the help of Tony, the clerk, I went through the, the code book, I went through public records. The current owners are still the old owners of the property. Therefore, they fall under the private property ownership. It was designated as a B-two zone, which is a business zone. And with that, and, and then on top of that, we also received an email from a resident asking why there was no response. To that end, um, as far as I understand, I think things proceeded the way that they should. If, if a fire occurs, people call in, you call nine-one-one, there are multiple calls to nine-one-one that day. As I understand it, Sergeant Sue Wilson was the first one to go out. The fire department went out, as well as the code officers, uh, told them that they were not allowed to burn and cited them, I think appropriately. And then I understand, I think the second day Chief Palmer had to, or another day Chief Palmer had to go back and say, no, you really can't burn. That's when the residents noticed, and I noticed myself from driving by, that it was a different company that was then just clearing the property and there was no burning after that. Um, so from the fire standpoint, I understand the fear, but I do think that everything was responded to as we would if we saw a house on fire in the neighborhood. It's, there was no way we had any knowledge to it. And unfortunately, because it wasn't the developer doing it, there wasn't a need for permits at that point. It was, it was permitted within the B-two code that they could clear their trees. And they, and all the setbacks that are written up in the code have to pertain to buildings that are on that property with respect to setbacks. So there wasn't a lot of language pertaining to an open lot that's just trees. That being said, um, I did come across one code, and that was chapter eight-five-eight referring to woodlands. And I do think that the board, we should address this because it seems that there's a lot of clearage on that lot, and it looks to me that it was in violation of section eight-five-eight, which says that not less than forty percent of woodland trees shall be cut or destroyed. Uh, in this case, it seems very clear to me that it's more than forty percent. And one of the, the main questions that I think the residents were expressing that night was, why wasn't somebody out there to enforce this? And I think law enforcement, fire responded appropriately. But then it came down to the question of what were the trustees doing about it? And that I understand some consternation, we can't trespass on private property. But when there are conflicts that are going on in the residents or in the village, I, I would like to learn and maybe we can discuss at some point how we deal with this and also how we can get correct information out to the community. Um, yeah, I just, I felt like there was a lot going on, and then with that, the emotions that tie in with fires, there was a lot of misinformation being said, and then a lot of anger that I think, had we known all the correct information, it could have been a little bit less scary. So I'm sorry that that happened, but I think that's where I'm at on that.
Okay. The response I've got remotely seemed to handle the situation. I can understand, you know, at the moment, it was a spooky situation to have smoke and fire that close. And then, but I understand the police and fire have responded. Uh, the ownership of the property wasn't the developer, so there are no permits. Uh, the issue on the woodlands, we need to maybe take a look into that and see what the issues.
And that one wasn't entirely clear if it related to B-one, B-two residential or just in general? And then we have a conflict of laws clause in here, which says which one's prioritized, and that's the most restrictive clauses. Um, so I think at this point, with this specific circumstance, and I'd be happy to do it with Tony and kind of go through the codes, but like find out which one is the most restrictive and how it applies. There was stuff about, uh, landscape to surface ratio as well, but yeah, so it's, I'm, I'm sorry that it happened. Um, but I think I'm done talking for the moment, sorry. Where to move forward from here? What's that? Where to move forward? Um, I'd like to, I'm gonna, I wanna look up the codes and make sure that we have that solidified. And I think at some point, we need to figure out or maybe clarify what the procedure would be for trustees and how we can communicate with the board, with the, the village in those. Especially when there's something like.
Situations, the trustees, they have no authority.
Yeah.
They cannot show up on the site and do anything.
That's okay, that's.
The best thing you can do, like a resident, now you contacted the appropriate authority, whether it's fire or police or myself, we go from there. And those are the situations, there's nothing, there's no, none of us have that authority. I don't have that. I'd send the chief out. Teaching that. So you've gotta kind of look at this in the tier of, you know, the executive bill and the branches of government.
Yeah.
On the executive, you're the legislative, the chief is the legal. So if something legal comes up, call nine-one-one. That's the best thing to do.
Just to clarify, this is the private owner of the property.
Right.
And we haven't heard from the developer since, he, he has not gotten a permit to build.
Right.
Yeah, this is a private.
It was, and we went through and looked to see if there are any permits that were requested for the work, but there weren't any, it wasn't through a business, and it was still under private property, so. Yeah.
Okay, any other comments on that?
So they have not. Not, not for the information that I received, no.
We heard anything from?
Uh, since someone of all his bills and the verification that his special use permit, which I don't give him, and then he was got until April and up to here. Okay. All right, that's it for the President's report, Clerk's report, Mr. President.
Is, is, is it okay if I just fill in a couple of quick gaps or something? I understand this is a private.
Okay.
So when we went off the first night when it was called and Sergeant Wilson went out, there was nobody on the property. So they, they, there was nobody for us to talk to that night. The next day, the next morning, we were going out to the range, I was driving by myself and went out there. And I stopped and talked to it, it was Natural Tree Service was the company that was doing it. And I spoke to them and told them that you absolutely cannot burn, you can't do this, and you know, it's gotta stop immediately. If you come out here again, you're gonna get cited for it. Um, the way we handled that verbally, letting go by warning, is exactly the same way we would handle it for any resident or any other business in town. We give residents a warning, say just, don't do it again, if they do it again, we go out and cite us. So it was handled differently than we would for anybody else. Okay, hopefully that helps.
Back to you. Oh, uh, I'm just. I do have one, one personal report that may, may not be relevant today. But as of last week, I became a new grandpa. They don't try to, so I ask them. Uh, uh, twelve pounds, no, eight. Eight, seven pounds, eight ounces, uh, more than twelve twenty-seven, uh, and twenty and twenty. I had to start remembering this, though, oh god, I'm losing my grandpa license. At twenty point two five ounce, uh, inches. Whittaker. Uh, Rainey Mills, uh, named after the father's middle name and the other grandpa. Mother, father, good fine grandpa's wreck. That's the only report I have, and thank you for the reports. Thank you, Johnny. Uh, planning and zoning. Barb, did I see you earlier?
Yes, no report, thank you.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Demmerich. Uh, Bridge Report, Mr. Schuster.
No report, Mr. President.
Mr. Schuster. Engineer, Mr. Steele.
You know, I always seem to have a base list of everything. Um, there are four permits on list for approval. Uh, three of them are from Nycore Gas. Um, it's just basically as they're switching out meters from inside homes to the outside of the homes. And then the comment permit is for various locations in City Hall Manor, Unit Twenty, and Windsor's first and fourth edition. Uh, it's just basically replacing the old lines and upgrading their services.
Take these one at a time, won't take them all together. Take them one. And a motion to approve Nycore's request. Number twenty-three oh one oh eighty-six point one thirty-three, as well as twenty thirty, two hundred and thirty-one oh eight point, one oh eight six point one ninety-seven. Those are the two Nycore, well, there's three Nycore. The third Nycore is two hundred and thirty-one oh eight six point two four four. Let's prove the gas permits for three twenty-two Sharon Drive, eight thirty Hemlock, and six, or eight thirty-three Hemlock. Motion?
Approved. Done.
Second, the at.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by the atly to approve the three permits for Nycore. Any comments, questions, or discussion?
I'd like to ask about Hemlock Drive. Uh, on Jeff, on the letter that you sent, you said that Hemlock Drive is to be overly the payment, payment within the next thirty days.
Yeah, and that actually already in the, uh, in my little review letter is, I stayed saying, make sure that it's done beforehand, um, but they're actually directionally boring underneath the road.
Okay.
So it shouldn't impact it at all, however, I let them know is if they are gonna have to impact Pop Hall, no, the road is to let us know, just so it's not being done after we open it. So it'd be.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I'm sure we don't do that. That's, I just wanna make sure that I understand what you're saying.
Their plan is the direction of wars.
Okay.
Should.
Oh, and just the, the context thing, sorry, I just noticed it earlier. Um, where it talks about R O W, existing highway road, what is?
It's, uh, right away.
Oh, okay, that makes me.
Building change.
I, I got it all contextual, but I just couldn't figure out road. Thank you.
No other comments, questions on the Nycore permits? But, uh, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? There's no one opposed, but has unanimously to Nycore. They do all, now, comment. One permit to comment, that's number one eight eight oh zero three five six zero. Acting Sleepy Hollow Manor, Unit Number Twenty, and Windsor, Number One, Two, Fourth Edition. Motion still approved?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thorne, seconded by Thomas. Okay. Approve the comment permit for the manor's number tw- two in Windsor, first and fourth edition. Any comments, questions, or discussion on that one? Come out, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I want to pose, the motion's so curious, well. Okay. Anything else, Jeff?
Uh, just setting up a pre-con with the contract for the road program, we want six in the setup, I'll let you guys know in the US.
More of the snow flies?
Okay. It's not, it's not like last chase.
Chase last year.
I got a question for Jeff.
Okay.
Hey, if they're gonna start working on Hemlock, is that when they start working on Locust? Get the weird thing about Locust?
Yeah, it's the same, yeah, same.
Okay.
All right, uh, finance, Dr. Finance, Mr. Vingian.
Request a motion for the warrants, an amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-seven cents.
So moved.
Second, Harding.
Moved by Thorne, seconded by Harding to approve the warrants of August seventh, two thousand twenty-three, in the amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-seven cents. Any additions, relations, comments, or questions?
I have a couple of questions. This is, the accounts payable, this, this is what correlates their detailed board report, right? Um, and actually, I thought maybe Kyle would have been answering this. I noticed that there are a couple of things that were done in triplicate. Um, the trailer jack, a, a light bar and strobe light, there's like all.
So what it is, is it's, it's one item, but it's broken down into different accounts because it's partially used by, it's partially used by oil, it's probably.
That's right, like.
Partly used by water, so, um, they have to break that amount down into portions.
Okay. And then, West Dundee, I thought Village of West Dundee was only char- was only in charge of our sewage, but then, under them, but there's some Comcast fans.
This is part of the, the IT agreement, so, um, they coordinate all our IT services.
That's right, okay.
So all our IT comes through them and, um, it's broken out between the different, uh, people that are part of that consortium.
Thank you.
So it's just our portion of it.
Good.
All right. Other comments or questions? The old office, Ms. Natalie.
Aye.
Ms. Bow.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Ms. Thorne.
Aye.
Ms. McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Harding.
Aye.
Six strong votes, no negative votes, a motion, so curious, well.
Definitely have.
All right, thank you, Jean. Uh, comments from the public? Okay. Edie Reese. Got the floor in five minutes.
Um, I wanted to address what happened on July twenty-fourth as well, and I know Courtney covered quite a bit of it. Um, I guess I'm, I, the statement that Ryback wasn't involved, I'm not quite sure about that, but I have to believe what I, what you say. Um, but I do know that I feel that the coding officials should be more involved. And I don't think she's involved enough. Because even though everybody drives on Sunday too, nobody stopped and wondered what was going on there. I'm, I'm just curious, I left at ten o'clock in the morning and nothing was going on. When I came back at five fifteen is when I saw the wood burning. Um, I had a friend who said that they were actually using a leaf blower to ignite the flames, which is quite dangerous. And I just can't imagine that one police officer didn't drive by and see it. That was at three-thirty in the afternoon. Um, yes, I am quite certain, I'm right next to it, along with my neighbors on Laurel Court. It could have been extremely dangerous, and I don't know what kind of finding whoever got it. I don't think that should have been warned, uh, a warning. I think it was beyond that. It was very careless and reckless of whoever did it. For the landscaping company to come in and think that that was okay is beyond me. I don't know what kind of company would be doing something like that. It's very scary. I'm just hoping that the village has somebody watching over this. This is in all our backyards. Social media is all over this right now, and there is not one person that is happy about it, is thrilled, and has seen the demise of what's going on. I think a smarter plan could have been put in place, I think it was rushed. And I'm sorry that this is happening.
Edie? Uh, next one, Mr. Family.
Any other ones? I'd like to, uh, simply mention a few things on behalf of the service clubs. First, I'd like to thank everybody in the village for their support on the fireworks and the Fourth of July. And on the fireworks, I just want everyone to know that Service Club was deeply disappointed in the show. Uh, it was not what we contracted for. We are in the process of trying to get some redress from the vendor. So we apologize for that. Um, I also, on fireworks, yes, I have to bring up the good news and the bad news at the same time. Uh, the way the finances worked out this year in the fireworks, this, unless something changes, this will probably be the last fireworks show I'm doing on the Fourth of July. Uh, it's just gotten too expensive and the turnout keeps going down for various reasons. And we, as a club, we can't continue to foot that bill. Um, I did have, a few people had asked me about the community garden, and we got kind of a late start on it. To let everybody know, we're still working on it, we're gonna continue to prep the garden area. And we'll have, we hope to have the planters ready to go in the spring of next year. So that is in the works. Uh, that, I forgot one thing, and I, and I just, so Chief, I want to say again, thank you for your support for the fireworks night and, and the fourth, and with the OEM coordination, it was greatly appreciated as always. And I also would like to, uh, say we did have a, a natural night out last Tuesday, and we had a couple of trustees. My, your name, Ms. McGuire and Ms. Thomas, who came and supported, and we appreciate you guys coming down and spending some time with us. And I think it was a, a good night, we, weather-wise, it was really good, so that was all I had, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Uh, Sharon.
Shannon Colwell.
Colwell, hi.
So I'm Shannon Colwell, I see a lot of familiar faces this evening, it's good to see folks. I've lived in the community for over twenty-five years, living in Carpentersville, East Dundee and West Dundee. Um, I live very close to Sleepy Hollow, and I would like to just say and have some comments around how does the village plan to continue to preserve the character of this community? I'm looking at each and every one of you, I'm asking it on.
And this is for public comment.
Yeah.
Do not make.
Sure, absolutely, but I'm, I'm talking and I would just love to, you know, have some attention, that's okay. But I think it's important because Sleepy Hollow is by far one of those beautiful communities around, and how are you guys going to prevent other, oh, property owners, right? That are just gonna start torching the trees? I mean, folks should really be so devastated by what happened and just say that no one knew what was going on, like you said. The police went out and then like three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine days later, that all these beautiful trees are just absolutely gone. And I understand property owners have a right, but I think you even mentioned, right? You're looking at different ordinances and maybe they shouldn't have cut forty percent or not, and it's much more than that. So what is the village plan to do to prevent this? I'm sure there's other lots of property up for sale. And people are gonna see what other property owners are doing, and how do you not know that in the next month or the month after, more trees aren't gonna be gone? This is serious, people's livelihoods are at stake, people have poured in their hard money and soul to raise their families, their investments, and this is what we're left with, a front entrance to Sleepy Hollow that's absolutely decimated. So although I don't live in Sleepy Hollow, I stand with each and every one of you because it is absolutely devastating every time I drive home, every single day.
Thank you.
Oh.
Lita. New Lita.
Lita.
Yeah.
Okay, that's me.
All right, um, I have a couple of things. First, I, I went back and I get some of the notes, and it said that there was supposed to be a hundred from the, our property. When this happened, it was supposed to be a hundred feet easement. I went out and measured, and it was at fifty-seven feet from my property that is cut, and I called Barb and Barb said she had battle at her surgery, she's not worried about it, she's not coming out. I'm sorry, but somebody else should have been appointed to watch her guard. Somebody should have been there and said, okay, we're gonna stay at that hundred feet. Even though it's personal, even though it's the people's personal property, if they're trying on leasing this land and not selling this land, but leasing this land to Ryback, then somebody should be there and watching them and not saying, okay, let's just destroy everything until Ryback gets happy. I'm sorry, that's wrong on everybody else's part. The trustees' part, because if I go out to my pole where my, I measure, they've taken all the way up to fifty-seven, fifty-seven feet from my property is left, that's it. When it's supposed to be a hundred, how are you gonna put those hundred trees, hundred-year-old tree back? How are you gonna put all that greenery back? You can't do that. And I know that no one's gonna comment. And I know that no one's gonna comment to that, and it doesn't really matter to you guys, but it matters to me because my parents, my grandparents bought this house in nineteen sixty-two. I've had it, my family here since nineteen sixty-two, that land has been there. And you guys are just destroying it, and it's, and nobody's looking at it, and that's not fair to, to live here. Second of all, there's a pole and at fifteen twenty-one Laurel Court. There's a comment pole, and they said, I had to talk to the engineer here, so I guess that would be you. It is almost, it's covered by trees, but it's almost coming down. It's leaning so far. That we are power, his power flickers constantly, and when I called come here, they said, talk to your engineering. So I'm here to tell you that. Fifteen twenty-one Laurel Court, it's in the middle of the backyard. And then there's a pothole right before his land, back towards driveway, that is getting so deep that. When you go, it's, I've seen people hit it and then almost hit his mailbox coming out of it. So if somebody could please take a moment to come out and look at that, I would appreciate it. But can we please pay attention to what's going on in that lot? It's, it's destroying everything that my grandparents. And their grandparents have been here for, and it's just not fair.
Sandra Kowalski?
Thank you, Charlie, I'm on Laurel Court, and I don't want to hold the water off a lot, it's just going down, and. I understand that, especially, I guess, a little older, I did, you know, you did some research, you're into it, it's great. And again, I know you're not gonna answer questions as usual, but I'm confused because if you look online, everywhere you look, you can see that the lot was sold. May nineteen twenty twenty-three for three hundred eighty thousand. So who is Belando wearing at this point, who is just wreaking havoc over there? And again, if you do pay attention, like I know you guys. Some of you do, online, it's not just the residents of Sleepy Hollow that have paid attention to this, who are very devastated. I understand that a lot of people do what they want, but in regards to. What supposedly went through with Ryback and everything else and how rushed it was, and you guys didn't wanna wait for the new board and everything else, so be it, but. How do we not know even who owns this land at this point? It's just at the point.
It's Richard and Judith Halligan. It did, it did not get sold. It did not, the sale did not go through in May.
Yeah, so this is what I'm saying though, but we should be, maybe some of the trustees would be keeping an eye on this, considering everything has. Twenty minutes dead, and I understand again, that lot's been for sale for a long time, but it should be. A little bit more of a priority to just keep an eye on what's going on, and I know all the residents would appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, trustee reports, roads and parks, Mr. Harnett?
Just one comment before that. If there is anything illegal going on at that lot, bring it to our attention. And show us what we can do about it. If there is anything that violates the law, let us know, okay? Okay, for a trustee report, uh, Kyle was gonna be here, unfortunately, he's out ill. He was gonna enthusiastically tell. Us about the equipment that he got. The village has a new chipper and a new mower. The chipper. Takes much bigger logs, but our old chipper was thirty-five years old. In the long run, this is gonna save the village money. Because we don't have to contract out as much. Um, as far as the lawnmower goes, uh, I should have Bill Hump. Give a report on it, but we won't, but I know Bill is enthused about it. He actually looks like he's having fun out there, so. Can't allow that. But Kyle thanks the public and the board for financing these new pieces of machinery that should help keep the village. Uh, its natural spaces looking. Much nicer than they have because we can keep up with the maintenance with that. That's all I have to report.
Okay, along with the uh, new more bark uh, chipper. The Public Works will also be starting to clear back the brush along the roadways too. So, you see trimming along Sleepy Hollow Road, Hillcrest, Crane, Joy. Anywhere we've got vegetation encroaching within the four feet of the pavement. And within fourteen feet of the top of the pavement, we will be trimming it. Now, we've got uh, the new employee and the new uh, chipper. So henceforth, just to let everybody know, there's any trimming alongside the road, that's what the crews are doing. So, thank you, Ed, anything else? Uh, finance, Mr. Thorne?
Yeah, a couple of things. Um, one of them is, uh, we're having a finance committee meeting tomorrow at one o'clock here, for anyone who's interested. And I don't, uh, I don't know if, uh, Mr. Vannis, anything to add at this point? Okay, a couple of other things. The, uh, I was involved in a call with a county project called the Randall Road Multimodal Improvement Project. Which sounds like it's gonna be horrible, but it's actually uh, uh, extended from Big Timber Road up to, I think, Algonquin. And they're putting in um, pedestrian access. That's all they're doing, so they're gonna put crosswalks and things, so they're not. Making widening rows or impinging on anybody's property or anything like that. Um, and I did mention to them about Joy Lane because I know there's some people from the village who walk over to where those restaurants are over there, and it might be nice to have. Uh, uh, a less life-threatening way to get over there. So, uh. I'm old-fashioned that way, I suppose. And the other thing is, um, we voted on a matter at the last meeting for, uh, uh, the, the folks at twelve oh nine Timber who were having a problem with. Some plug culvert, so it wasn't on their property, it was right off of it, but it was causing some flooding on their property and, uh. The uh, crews came out, uh, from Pond, I believe it was, and uh, got rid of that. The reason I'm bringing this up is it's. If you remember those ninety-three degree days, um, this couldn't be done like. By spraying it up, people had to go in there with shovels. It is about three-foot diameter pipe, and it's about thirty feet long, and it was full. So they went and did all that, and, um. Um, then they came in and, uh, used an excavator to, uh, make sure that it didn't back up into their, folks at twelve oh nine's property any longer. So that's something that's actually happened and, uh, uh, it worked out very well, so. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, Water and Sewer, Ms. Bo?
Uh, it's been an event for a couple of weeks, nothing bad. Um, but I had some residents up in Jame, well, some frustrating parts. I had some residents up in Jamestown, up in Deer Creek, contact me, they're having poor drainage. From Randall Road. Uh, Jeff and I went out and met with them, I think within two days of getting the email, we were able to coordinate. And we had a really good hour-long meeting with the one residence and then their next-door neighbors, and we learned that there had been an issue. About ten years ago, where there's some construction over on Randall that had collapsed the drainage and pipes up there. And long story short, what was nice is this brought to my attention, this Randall over ninety project that's coming up. I would not have necessarily put it in the context of water and sewage, but they brought this to my attention, so I'd like to, I'm gonna start attending the meetings, I know. Trustee Diatley has brought it up before, and also reached out to Cliff Searges from the county to make sure that Sleepy Hollow is heard with respect to water issues on Randall. As well as the noise suppression. I know that's not my purview, but it was talked about in the same conversation. Um, the result of that meeting is, I talked to Jeff, we're gonna have Kyle or whoever from Public Works, there's two drains that are up. On private, like right between the two private properties at the end of Deer Creek just before Randall, that have some grates over them. That just, they need to check and make sure they're cleaned out, and then that will help the water go into the underground pipes. Instead of going up into the drains in front of the people's properties. So we're gonna try and do that, see if that helps correct issues, and then. If there's, if there's no remedy, then we'll go back to it, so. Um, then also, then the second issue was, I've had more residents approaching me for getting off of well and going to water. And, uh, one resident, she and I have been talking about it, she had some really good conversations. And then I had a chance to talk to Jeff from Engineering and Eugene from Finance and just learned that. There's a lot more to this than simply getting the support of your neighbors and saying, yes, this is what we want. Um, there's gonna be a lot of money involved in it from the village's standpoint, as well as the residents who would be impacted by it, those who have well. Um, a couple of things that I learned was, because of new Illinois laws, wherever a B, a B-box is installed, the residents must. Connect to it within six months. We don't have the option of not attaching to water mains. Additionally, the residents would be responsible for connection fees, the pipes from their house out to the B-box. And then also shutting down their wells. So I wanted to get a big, I wanted to get the, the whole idea of what this would encompass, so that we can then address the residents. There's about a hundred and seventy residents, some have great water, some don't, so it's gonna take a lot of. Time and communication and reaching out to them to figure out what, how they'd like to proceed. And lastly, um, at the Safer and Sleepy Hollow meeting, they also brought up Lake Sharon Pinecone Lake. And there's a discussion about property across Route seventy-two over by Verlo Matress. This was the first I'd heard of it. Uh, they raised a concern that there's, Sleepy Hollow is purchased about thirty-one acres over there. And that once it's developed, there were rumors about maybe kind of a. Uh, not, not a truck stop, um. I'm sorry. RV, yes, some kind of a lot. And so there are concerns where if this place gets cleared. How is this gonna impact the watershed of the well residents? Uh, the lakes, like Lake Sharon, Pinecone Lake, as well as the Jelkie Creek watershed. So this was the first I had heard about it, I will look into it some more. But I just wanna acknowledge it and give it out there. And that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Courtney. Uh, Police and Public Safety, Mr. Diatley?
Um, I don't have anything this evening, but I will, you invite her to the chief.
I, I just, I, I sent a, a message out, and we, an employee passed a, quite a milestone, um, in our organization. Becky Freeman, our, our records clerk, has been here thirty-five years, um, July twenty-fifth. And today's day and age, it's tough to get somebody to stay for thirty-five hours or thirty-five months. So getting somebody to stay with one employer for thirty-five years is quite an accomplishment, and, uh. I, we got her a little cake and, and a card and stuff, when it happened, but I just wanted to publicly acknowledge, uh, that fact, and I appreciate her time, and she's dedicated to the.
Appreciate Becky's loyalty. In thirty-five years, she's gone through a lot of trustees too. A lot of changes, or, you know, she's seen on her employees, uh, you know. Kudos to her for staying in the house as long as she has to. Okay, that's it for the police. Thank you, Chief, thank you, Steve. Uh, building an environment.
So just, just one thing, and I thought, and I tried looking for it in the code book, but. So one, one thing that came up is, um, air quality lately has been horrible, and then we were in drought for a while, it seems everything's cleared up now, but. Um, one question that I, that I had, or that we can talk about a little bit, is when we, we're, we're in a drought. Or we have bad air quality, do we have limitations on like watering, burning, stuff like that?
Uh, the village is on a permanent, even odd watering, which we initiated back in the eighties.
Yeah, that's the only thing I found.
Uh, other than that, it would be an announcement of an emergency situation, either from the county. Or from, uh, the state that, that we rely upon. And then we have, uh, in the past encountered or suspended any of the weekend burning. You know, but that takes a board action on agenda item. Moving forward that way.
Okay, it seems that most of it's cleared up now, the air quality's gone back down, or the number's gone down, and we're obviously not in a drought right now, so. Maybe something to look in next time we go a couple of months, with both at the same time is not for good either, so. Uh, that's all, that's the only question I had, thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Uh, Building and Zoning, Tom?
Um, just, I just wanna say, um. To the Service Club and to the chief and his team, you know, I was out there with, uh, Jenny was out there as well. At the night, uh, night out event, and it was, it looked like it was very well attended. Um, I think it would be, be move us to, as a. Team and a board, I, I say team, to be out there as well. We don't have to all go together, because I know that. Is the meeting, open. But, um, I think it would be good, cause I did see a lot of other, um, you know, mayors, trustees from other villages and. You know, saw the police departments were there, so, um, I just wanna thank you and your team, and the Service Club was doing a great job, you know. Brilling the hot dogs and, and everything, so there was a lot of people going, so thank you for that. Um, the other thing, I have a question on, um, I know Barb is laid up, and I've talked with her a couple of times. If there is anything that I can do to help her. With things that she's got going on, so things don't get delayed, please let me know, cause I'm open to that. I don't. Know everything, and I have admitted that to you, um, but if, and to Barb, but if I can help in any way. To get things moving since she's laid up with her guidance, I, you know, I'll be happy to talk to her and, and your guidance. Let me know, uh, cackle out and do what needs to be done.
Okay, thanks, Kelly. Uh, old business, uh, business is coming for the board, taking care of that, new business, and new business is coming for the board. And new business is coming for the board?
Move, we adjourn?
Second.
Moved by, yeah, seconded by, all in favor, signify by saying aye? Most opposed?